Hello, welcome to the No- no meeting of the Kingsbury Commission.
Howdy.
Hey. All right. Uh, this is the City of Kingsbury, Texas Regular Commission Meeting. Uh, our mission statement, as always, is the mission of the City of Kingsbury is to protect the residents from forceful annexation by another municipality, to maintain limited government, maintain low take rates of taxation, incur no debt, and protect the rights of its citizens. At this point, we'll do our pledges to the flag.
And pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
One, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas pledge.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Yeah, man, Texas.
I was choking on a I chewed up that mint real fast and so I was choking on like a little tiny piece. Sorry for that. All right, we'll do a roll call. All right, Commissioner Heinemeier.
Here.
Commissioner Ignashek.
Here.
And Mayor Nolan.
Here.
Have a pour. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Uh, number one, under announcements, uh, we had our Fall Festival last, which went great.
It did.
Are we, are we compensating Robin for doing all that?
I asked her if she was compensating herself and she said she was, so.
Okay, all right.
She raised all the money, she paid herself and.
Excellent.
I think the sponsorship really worked out.
That's great.
And, uh, one of the things I was thinking also is if, you know, in the future, uh, the future festivals with the, with the sponsorship, we may be able to even forego possible booth fees and just have it free and that way.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, wouldn't that be amazing? So, but you know, it was our first year, we didn't know how all that was gonna work out.
She's run it and she did good.
She did a fabulous job.
Yeah, that I know of.
Just stay out of the way and let her run with it.
So.
She thought she was, um.
That's the most, yes.
Awesome, awesome. So it didn't go horribly, she didn't run screaming from the event, so that's good.
How'd you like to do an MC?
Waiver until the day before then. The day after.
But that would be great if we get enough in sponsorships to be able to forego booth fees and then we, that would be, that we would have vendors out there, wasn't maybe too many like we have had in the past. But it was just a thought, it was a thought that I had.
Indoor fees, booth fees, that's, that's some of her income.
Yeah, it is.
You know, so.
Uh, yeah, it is.
Careful if you ask her to cut her salary.
That's true, that's true.
I don't know if it makes sense to cut all, I mean, maybe lower the booth fees, but like cutting them, it might just be a free-for-all.
Free is cheap and cheap doesn't get treated well.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Weirdly enough.
Yeah, you're probably, yeah, you're probably right, yeah.
We charge because you gotta make some money here.
Uh, let's see, any further announcements? Um, oh, well, I'll, that one.
It's my last time to sit here.
It's all since we're doing a changing of the guard here in a little bit. Um, let's see, item number two, public, oh, uh, back to announcements again. I've been contacted a couple of more times by the investigative reporter for WFAA and, and, uh, our W, yeah, in, uh, in Dallas, uh, about, and he really kinda wants to get with you. Did he get with you?
Well, yes, did you, uh, he sent an email to you and he copied me.
Okay.
On that email.
Uh-huh. This is regarding the Texas Heroes. It's, it's something that Art has, uh, that Art, uh, Martinez Tabata has something to do with and it's something that I believe the City of Dallas agreed to and, and passed. And then they started realizing that it would mean that anybody in Dallas can sue the city, which previously they, you know, could not.
Stupidity.
And so, and, and I mentioned TGAA and he wanted to know more about that and he was, and we've talked a bit about that and so, I, and I, you know, we really, you know, we were able to change things that didn't fit for a very small city, you know, with, uh, the, I was gonna say bylaws, yeah.
Accountability.
Yeah. And, uh, so we really have had no problem with it, you know, we pretty much did everything above board anyway, so we haven't had any issues with it. Um, he's, you know, he was talking about it's much easier to get out than it is to get in. We, we talked about that, you know, prior to everything, so, uh, so he was really wanting to know about our relationship with Art, uh, and then, uh, but this Texas Heroes thing that Dallas is dealing with, I, that was the first I'd heard of it, so that was.
Well, I, uh, I, uh, the email he, and you mentioned that to us, man, uh, that, that he brought up that subject. Now, the email he sent us did not talk about, uh, the Texas Heroes or, uh, for the City of Dallas.
Yeah.
It only talked about, uh, a lawsuit, uh, by the City of Odessa against TGAA. And TG, and it's pending in the, uh, what is that, uh, Odessa's, I forget what county, but it's in the district court there in Odessa. Now, in, in reply, uh, TGAA invoked their agreement with Odessa, which has an arbitration clause, and they have asked to transfer, stop the pending lawsuit and transfer it to an arbitrator in the City of Dallas.
Mm-hmm, oh.
And, uh.
For Odessa to transfer to, okay.
Or for the court to trans, to transfer it to a private arbitrator. Because that, and I think we have the same arbitration agreement in our agreement. Uh, I, I looked at it and, and I read, and he attached the lawsuit. And I, I read that and then I thought, we're not a party to that lawsuit. And I thought, it's not urgent, it's not that big a deal, but I did, and then I forgot about it until just a few minutes before this meeting. And I just forwarded that email to Frank and Allison and to you and Jessica. And I forwarded and said, y'all should be aware of this and, uh, and I, I said in there that we probably should not discuss that pending lawsuit unless we do it in an open meeting.
Yeah.
With agenda.
Yeah.
Set up on an agenda.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, and I also said, but each of you, and, and each of you can reply to me about what's going on.
Yeah.
And I can discuss it with each of you separately, but you should not reply to all if you reply back to my email.
Okay.
Uh, none of you, you should reply only to, to me until we get it, until you decide what you wanna do and whether you wanna put it on the agenda in an executive session next time to talk about pending lawsuits.
Okay.
Uh, Kingsbury is mentioned, the City of Kingsbury is mentioned in the lawsuit, but only by Roy of San that Odessa says, well, there's only two cities in Texas that have joined TGAA, that being Odessa and Kingsbury.
Yeah.
Wow, so Odessa's already suing them to try to get out.
They're, they're suing them to, uh, to terminate the agreement.
Well, hey, if they terminate it, then I guess we're free of it too because they can't have just one.
Process.
I, I don't know whether we're free or not. If they term, if they terminate it, that's terminated between Odessa and TGAA. We still have an agreement.
Still exist.
And, uh, and I think also, I didn't.
No, that Dallas issue is, has to do with Texas Heroes.
I know that the reporter said in that email to us, and you'll see it, each of you can review it, he said, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to know what Mr. Druvan thinks about this and the effect on the City of Kingsbury, and I welcome him to call me and make a statement or just call me and talk to me. I, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to do so. I don't, and unless you guys instruct me.
Cause he is an investigative reporter, he's, you know, he's a.
I don't, my, my position is, this is a lawsuit somewhere in Odessa or Dallas and it doesn't involve us, so I have no comment.
Yeah.
With respect to a WFAA report.
Yeah, that's how it all came about. He contacted me because of Texas Heroes and when he looked up Art, he saw that he was one of our city attorneys. I said, you know, Art's done helped us a lot, uh, and the only organization that we're involved in with town is through TGAA, which he had never heard of. So that's where he started off down that thread.
Okay.
So it's, I just gave him information that's out there and.
So the story he's working on is Texas Heroes, but that's not mentioned in that email to you?
Yeah, not, that's not mentioned to me.
Okay.
So that's just a separate thread he's pulling at, yeah.
He's looking at the lawsuit and he's looking, I guess, he doesn't ever mention Texas Heroes.
Yeah, okay. That's where it started.
But we have an email copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I just wanna make sure that, yeah, because we had mentioned your name.
Yes.
We're reading this stuff.
Thank you, Sam.
Yes. All right, uh, as far as announcements too, here, here is our check report. Um, all right, so you'll see some red. I have formatted our check report so that if it falls below $25,500, it's yellow and if it falls below $25,000, it's red. Because, uh, I got with, uh, Broadway Bank, again, I said, why are we getting these, these charges? And, yeah, and I'm sorry for the, the color, it's just my, my ink at home.
So the pink is yellow?
Yeah, the pink is, no, the pink is, pink is red, the blue is green.
Oh, never mind, sure, that's okay.
This column should be green and this turquoise.
The turquoise is green, okay.
The pink is, the pink should be red.
All right.
Um, so what it turns out is our, because we're under a kind of a business account, if our account falls below 25,000, we get this charge. I think that was waived until the chick with two thumbs, uh, bounced that one check cause I hadn't moved the money over for the, so it's not a big deal, we're typically, yeah. And we're typically around that anyway, so, uh.
Do we need an account that charges us over 125,000?
We have a free account with First United, we don't have 25,000 in there.
It doesn't require but a hundred bucks in it.
Yeah, yeah, well, this was when we did the RFP or RFQ for bank accounts. Broadway's one of the ones that, one of the only ones that responded, so that's why, that's why we have.
It was a city account kinda thing.
Yeah, it's a city account. Um, and this is only because it kicked, kind of kicked in, it was free, it's been free until. Yeah, I, I, basically I bounced a check because I had moved.
Okay, so we had to keep a $25,000 balance.
Which is, I'm not even trying to do it, we're, right now, we're up to 32 and I just pause another $586, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a problem, but that's why those are red, because I have it formatted now so that if it falls below that.
If it falls below that, it'll notify you.
We should be good, we should not incur any more charges.
Correct.
For that. Uh, they did reimburse us for all the previous charges, so that's the first line there, that's the 8318. Um, let's see, had some franchise fees come in from Blue Bonnet. I did kick over some money from Texas Class to make sure we were bumped up to cover that 25,000, uh, Blue Bonnet, that's franchise fees. Um, I did our normal 2,000 back to Texas Class, that's okay.
What's Texas Class?
Oh, Texas Class is, uh, something, uh, Liquid Asset Savings.
Okay.
And it's a place, it's a interest-bearing for municipalities.
Oh, cool.
Uh, so it's, it's where we can get, uh, it's like a.
A little percentage.
Yeah. It's a liquid asset savings, uh.
Cool.
Yeah, we can make a little bit.
It is approved, it's really.
Interest-bearing.
Yes. Uh, we had, we paid our TML, Annual Membership Fee. Uh, I think we had budgeted $650, it was actually $651. Uh, our waste management, that was for that roll-off dumpster, the 45427 for the City Hall, so that was the actual, uh, balance of that roll-off fee. Uh, there's that, I have that, that 2802 as last monthly fee. And actually, we are in the green or in the black with monthly fees because I reimburse the city, they reimburse the city, so even though they took out 2802, we're still $28 ahead of the game, so, so we should be good. Um, and then we got our mixed beverage tax receipts for 366. And then our sales tax for September was 4,064. So, and so our total checking balance is 32,78199 and over all of our accounts, it's On that, all right. Item number two on the agenda, public comments or discussion, any comments?
Do you wanna mention the, um, Jamie Trant and, um.
Yes.
Yes.
You had two. Raska.
Raska.
They made it?
Yes.
Yes.
They came by before the meeting started to say thanks for.
All right.
For allowing them to.
Oh, good, Jamie was on it with those signs.
Yes.
Yeah, and the other guy did.
I voted both of them.
Yeah, so I believe the three newcomers all got on, um, so.
This is the crystal clear.
Crystal clear, uh, Board of Directors, yes.
And the next meeting, December 3rd, is what we understand of their board, which, yes, which is, is it which time assume they will be installed as the new board members?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think he did say even it may be not till January, but they're trying to get it earlier than that.
Uh, because it has to be on the agenda and.
Yeah.
We're not.
Yes, thank you for that. Um, so, and you've been looking at the website to see if there's any changes and, but I guess they haven't taken their office or their seat, I guess.
I was looking all over for the result of the election and I couldn't find anything.
Yes, if you look on the Guadalupe Elections Office, uh, you can find, there was a hundred different elections, you know, a lot of, of, of seats in other cities in the county and, and, uh, there was, uh, and then that was one of it. And so, and it was like the top three percentages and, um, the top three, uh, percentage getters were the ones then they're elected and yes.
Raska.
Patterson.
Good work.
Thank you.
All right, item number three, review of.
Wait a minute, that was her.
Oh, I'm sorry, what you got?
I'm always sorry, but I'm here anyway to say thank you for all the people that have been showing up for.
City Commission.
But no, there's other meetings, other than the City Commission, there are workshops and they're.
Oh, yes.
Showing up for that as well as actually working.
Oh.
Most grateful for that.
Yes.
Meanwhile, in the past week, we have had mailboxes removed from the street. Fortunately, they have been re.
Installed.
Were they vandalized, vandalized or?
No, 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 a, an auto hit them and yes, he returned.
Forcefully removed, yeah.
Accidentally forcibly removed.
He came out, he told these people all. Got their mail, it's funny, I'm watching these people walking up and down, what's going on out there, so I go like that, oh, four mailboxes and each one had mail. Uh, so McGarities put the new post and the other boxes as well as McGarities.
So they've been replaced?
Yes.
That's good.
The mail truck that used to park here in Kingsbury looked as though it was gonna start doing that again rather than Prairie Lee. I don't know if it's a computer mess-up in talking to our postmaster and the day it happened, uh, it may be that the mail truck will be parked here all day rather than over Prairie Lee, whether or not the mail is gonna come direct here or as currently, because the truck goes to Luling, then to Prairie Lee, used to it came here, that's what happened recently and, anyway, so we may have the mail truck parked back at the Kingsbury Post Office during the day and overnight is the way that that works. So sorry about the accidents that happened on Interstate 10, I personally drove down and see that, why that's a death bridge, so to speak.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Safety, it's, it's a term, it's, it's something overlooked in the speed, everybody, self-included, cause I'm staying with traffic, doing 85 in that 65 all the way through there. Sorry to say, but it's, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak, there, there's so many things happening and not happening and it's nice to know that we're in a community that cares about each other.
Yes.
Uh, all right, item number three, review of public documents, are residents needing help with ETJ annexation paperwork? Um, I will say that I got the paperwork together for some properties that are there along, uh, 90, that would then facilitate further annexation, so, um.
They express an interest in?
Yes, and so I have all the, the ETJ removal and the voluntary annexation paperwork.
On 9?
Oh, no.
Oh.
For, for them, I got all of that, it's like six, oh, it's like, big packet. So we'll see.
Super due, hold on, hold on.
So.
Getting closer to you.
Yeah. Um, item number, yeah, and if, if, if and when that goes through, then we'll be doing a lot of more people would then be able, that have expressed interest would then be able to, yes, sir.
Another public comment, I am so grateful for a small agenda this time.
Yeah.
Can we go on?
Maybe we'll quit adding to it.
All right, item number four, old business, the consent agenda item, this is the approval of the October 20th, 2025 Regular Commission Meeting Minutes. Anything on the, this consent agenda that needs to be moved to the regular agenda?
No.
All right, so those stand as, as approved. Item number five, discuss and consider, swearing Shane Heinemeier as City Commissioner.
Of course we're.
So this is, you know, it's been 10 years this month.
10 years, 10 years.
Yes, that Allison has served as City Commissioner.
Very good years.
Yes, I came in as a young woman and now.
And what, we learned so much together.
Yes, we did.
Oh, my gosh, and Allison has been mayor pro temp, I believe, all that, all that time, so.
Every time Shirley goes out of town, I get to stomp around Kingsbury being mayor.
In there, and, uh, so, yeah, gosh, it was definitely a learning experience, you've provided so much to the City of Kingsbury and done so much work and we're not gonna let you go without completing just more of whatever you want to, you know.
Which I'm gonna talk about in, in, uh, number six.
Yes.
Um, well, it's been a wonderful time being here, I have learned a lot. Um, I am so grateful to the town of Kingsbury for passing the resolution that we make creativity in the arts as part of our commons and part of our, our, you know, uh, things that make us tick and all the things that Kingsbury has done for the community and, yeah, it's been an honor to serve beside you guys and beside your wife Janet.
Oh, yeah, it's not easy, it's, it's not easy starting a city. I mean, uh, we certainly had some support, uh, from, from Art, you know, uh, to kinda get us into the right direction here and there and, uh, but a lot of it was just a learning experience to how to start a Texas city. Not many people have done that and you've definitely been a part of that.
I've started a Texas city. With Shirley.
So, yes, we thank you for your service.
And yeah, you're saying that there is no other city that has ever incorporated and within two years changed the law in Texas regarding municipal annexation.
There you go.
True, that is true.
Yeah.
We're the ones that.
Yep, yep.
But congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, yes.
And the verbal, all-female city council.
That's right.
Possibly the first time as far as you can tell.
First inaugural city, city, uh, all-female city council.
Yep. And now we're gonna make it, we're gonna be outnumbered.
And, yes.
It's the cycle of life.
It's the cycle of life, yes.
I wanted to say.
Yeah, now Laddie's gonna have to be mayor.
He doesn't, he's seen enough, he doesn't want any.
A big no.
Yeah, that's what I said, just you gotta talk him into it.
All right, at this point, I believe Shane should come up. I, uh, Jessica is going to issue you the oath of office.
Oak leaves or something?
I, I brought out a gavel, yes.
Boy, oh.
Well, I don't wanna go.
Oh, I guess I can sit here while he gets inaugurated, right?
Praying themselves in the shop.
Yeah.
Are we in there?
Yes, she has camera going too.
Are you zooming in?
Can't do it. All right, so raise your right hand, yes?
Yes.
All right.
As City Clerk of Cape Verde.
Wait after me. Hi, Shane Heinemeier.
Hi, Shane Heinemeier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of City Commissioner.
I'll faith, faithfully.
Oh, boy.
Execute the office.
Okay, here, I will faithfully execute.
I'll faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office of City Commissioner.
Yes. On behalf of the City of Kingsbury.
On behalf of the City of Kingsbury.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do the best, and will to the best of my abilities.
And will to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state, Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And then also, I Shane Heinemeier.
I also Shane Heinemeier.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have not directly or indirectly.
I have not directly or indirectly.
Paid, offered, promised to pay.
Paid, offered, or promised to pay.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Contributed or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
For the giving or withholding of a vote.
At the election at which I was elected.
At the election at which I was elected.
Or as a reward to secure.
Or as a reward to secure.
My appointment or confirmation.
My appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God again.
Yes, that last part is a anti-brobbery.
Is this my chair? Oh, oh, sure.
My damn, Shirley's gonna have to watch it back.
Wherever you wanna sit, I just have my stuff here. So yes, that's.
This is my gavel, right?
That last part is an anti-brobbery statement.
Got you, got you. Well, it's funny, leading up to it, I'm like, what, where is this going? But, um.
Yeah, the first part is more inspiring feeling.
Yes.
My attorney's right over there, that's a conflict of interest, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to?
I have to change attorneys.
This is.
No, I don't want to do that.
Yes, let's go ahead and talk about that.
Because there's no dispute between you and the city.
There you go, see, there you go.
That $200 that yellow dog gave to you, sir.
That yellow dog will bring you that $200 back, I promise.
Um, and at this point, as part of, since, as we were saying, Allison was mayor pro temp, uh, we can at this point elect a new mayor pro temp, which, uh. we can at this point elect a new mayor pro tem, which, nominating Frank Ignatius as, as our senior commissioner on the, on our council, so all those in favor, oh, I will nominate Frank, I'm guessing.
I make a motion that we nominate Frank.
All right, I will second that motion.
I'll accept a nomination.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, all right. All right, going through the proper motions. All right, and at this point, I have a name tag ordered for you and it has not come in.
Oh, that's okay. Is my name spelled right, more importantly?
Yes, it is.
Okay, cool, we already had to figure that out, yeah.
Yes, it is, and I have Frank, a new one coming also for mayor.
Okay. Oh, right, right, right.
So, they're nice, they're.
Put that one in your fridge.
They're magnetic, so they don't, you know, ruin any clothing and.
Oh, I'm familiar with them. I helped keep hers up for her, actually.
Oh, there you go.
I was like, I'm the one who was like, you gotta start keeping one of them. Yeah, and I'm the one who said you gotta start keeping it in the car because that way it's just ready to go.
Well, I learned with my first one, I guess I had it free-floating in my bag or something and it got scratched up.
Oh.
Yeah, it was, it really got scratched up.
Even your car in August, when you clip that on, I've got a scar on my chest.
That's like a brand.
Smell like bacon. I'm going to write that one down. I don't want that tattoo.
Smelled like bacon.
Our scarification, body scarification, don't, not, don't want Frank's body scarification. Don't wear it in August.
Well, that's good to know.
Don't keep it in the car, yeah, in August.
All right, awesome, this is so exciting. So, item number six, discuss and consider. Our Town Grant has my name on there, however, it, should we?
We can give it for me.
Yes, we'll give the floor to.
I make a motion we give the floor to Allison Heinemeier.
Well, what an exciting day, man, new commissioner and, and we get to talk about a really cool project that we're going to do, gang. Let me see, I'm gonna, so I, I could not, I don't have a laptop that works, but I did put it together a few images. Hang on, let me just see if I can get it to play without music. Hang on, ah, stop, stop. Oh, dear.
Edie Cassell mentioned that she is here. I mean, she's in the, no, she's a.
Ariel and Simon were supposed to come here, but I don't, they're not here. So.
They're over there.
As part of.
Yes, so I am going to.
That's the fire people.
Yeah. Okay, let me find the stamp folder. There it is, it's, sorry.
You're out of it, are you?
I'm a little out of it because being up here is just, no.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of overwhelming, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I did figure out how to make this play.
No, sir, you're not out of it.
I've kind of retired.
Okay, I'm just going to do these one by one. So, we have many people involved in the Art Town project that are going to help Kingsbury build a bunch of really cool things. This is our fabulous intern, Michelle Lindson. She is an art student at UTSA and she's currently getting her degree and doing mid-term, so she's not going to be able to be here tonight, but I think she's watching too. Michelle, isn't she cute? And she's so organized!
That's a cute part.
So she'll be helping us with meetings, with organizing all the things we're going to be doing for the Art Town Grant, which are many things. We're going to build an outdoor water fountain in behind City Hall. We're going to build an outdoor pavilion. We're going to build a classroom at Habitable Spaces. The first people we're going to be working with are two artists and teachers. This is Leandra Utura, who teaches down at Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, and as you can see, she's standing by a very large finger. She makes some pretty amazing artwork. This is some of her artwork, figurative. She also is an amazing teacher and she teaches people how to do claywork and she's going to be leading some of the seminars that we're going to use to get the community to build these pieces. I mean, I, you'll, we're going to populate our website later, so if you want to check out more of their work, you know, obviously this isn't the best technology. This is Misty Gamble, another rock star art teacher. She teaches up at West Texas University up in Lubbock. She might correct me on that one. It's near Lubbock.
In West Texas.
West Texas, yeah.
I think.
Texas, West Texas A&amp;M.
In West Texas A&amp;M, yes.
And she is an amazing figurative sculptural ceramics person as well. Here's, she is working on a piece. She, she'll mold the pieces and then carve them out and fire them. Here's some of her artwork. So what we've been kind of brainstorming about, Leandra and Misty and I are going to build the outdoor water fountain with the community of Kingsbury. Anybody who wants to work on it, we're going to start meeting monthly. We're going to come up with plans. We've been kind of talking about, oh, here's another one of Misty's pieces. We've been kind of talking about doing things like this. This is the Tarot Garden in Paris by Nicky Saint Fall and, you know, something super tiled with mosaic tiles that will fire, will build and fire and, and apply. Gaudi, another inspiration. We're going to be kind of, things like that. So, oop, damn it. Can't even get the dumb technology that I'm doing to work. Here's another Gaudi bench. So, you know, but this is all things that we will all plan as a community together and with the help and guidance from the people, the artists, the art, that we've chosen to work on this with us.
And the link is, you said?
It's on our website, habitablespaces.org, so you can look on our website. Michelle's in the middle of midterms, so she's the updater of the website, so don't expect it quite yet. Here's another Gaudi.
Habitablespaces.org, correct?
So this is kind of what we're thinking. Another Gaudi, Barcelona. This is Edie, who's watching. Edie.
Michelle's watching also.
Oh, cool. Edie runs Floribula's Flower Farm in Seguin and she is a mastermind of plants and has worked with extensively in Austin, doing an amazing community garden that's still there and quite successful. And then she also was involved with the perennial food forest in Austin. So I've just downloaded, these are going to be too hard to see, but perennial food forest and what the themes are of perennial food forests, we'll be exploring that. Perennial food forests are basically, it's an interactive forest that the community of Kingsbury will be able to go into and pick fruit from the trees. It's all, everything that grows there is edible, so when we get it going, people will be able to come and enjoy whatever grows in it. Yeah, this is Rachel Gleason.
My cousin.
She's amazing and she's in Washington State and she has worked on a bunch of really cool projects. This is West Chelsea Piers, I think it's the Hudson River Project in New York. So she designed all of these piers and as you can see, she's bringing, she brings green spaces into pretty industrial spaces with her landscape architecture firm. There's another one of her projects, pretty large-scale stuff. Little Kingsbury is nothing for what she, but she's got the talent. So I'm hoping she'll be working with us and helping us think about all this stuff and design it.
She has accepted, you said you're hoping.
She also did the Waller Creek Project in Austin, so that's, I'm drawing from that and I don't know if you guys have been there, but it's beautiful. They took over an old creek that was just filled with garbage and kind of running through Austin and it could have, you know, and they made it gorgeous. They tiered it down and put all these native plants in it and it's, it's now flowing again with water rather than just tennis shoes and garbage.
Is it part of a park? And I'm trying to remember the name of the park, but that's okay. When you say Waller, it confuses me because I go over by Houston to Waller.
If you see the map of it, it goes all the way through Austin, so it's quite extensive.
Right, that's.
It's been, it's been a long, ongoing project. I think they're still working on parts of it. There, there's some of it. So we've got, and there's more of it. This is Simon and Ariel, who you guys might know. They live down the road from Texas Cobb. So if you guys haven't visited their space yet, I encourage you to do so, but we're going to be working with them and I asked them to send some of their buildings. You guys might recognize that.
Mm-hmm.
Their little outhouse. This is their Cobb, it's a little Cobb building. This one is, that's not the one that's at their place, is it?
No, that's the Texas Permaculture Guild. That's a future gallery space.
Okay, so that's a gallery that they built and they're going to be doing ferro cement to us.
It's huge.
No, no, I said, I noticed over.
That's that one, that you're talking about.
That, no, that's the other one. The, I say it looks like a wellhouse is what it.
Oh, that's the kids, that's a kids playground.
Okay, I want, it's the latest thing I saw appear and I'm like, but.
Sorry, I couldn't do a better presentation. I was at work all day. That was crazy.
That's a great presentation.
Yeah, yeah.
All this info will be on our website, so these are the artists that we're working with to achieve this and we're going to be relying on the Kingsbury City Commission to, oh, and the most important artist right here, Jessica Gardner, is one of our artists.
Never heard of her.
Jessica Gardner, also Kingsbury's illustrious city clerk, is going to be putting together a documentary video of this whole process and we will have that for Kingsbury to put on its website for us, for, you know, just kind of documenting the people of Kingsbury, the project, how we got it all together and how we made a super cool public art piece in downtown tiny little town.
Nice.
So, yeah.
That's exciting.
So what, I've been kind of discussing with the team, because we're going to need to meet with you guys, is what day would be good to do a monthly meeting. Hopefully.
I know, we're pretty busy.
At the house over there.
Well, I'll talk about it, we'll get back to you. Pretty, pretty busy over here.
Next month.
Pretty busy over here, though. Yeah, we'll get with you.
Is there a day that works, is there a day that works better than others? I think a lot of our artists have said Wednesday, but I don't know if anybody's.
I was thinking of really Tuesday, about seven, seven fifteen.
To.
Someone's already thought about this.
Coinciding with.
That's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Some meetings are fifteen minutes at the end and I'm just, I'm just so interested in that, I'm just, I'm playing.
That works, I, I'm.
All right, we could do Tuesday. We'll have to check with the team and find out what their day.
We'll have to discuss this.
Yeah, we need to, we need to discuss this a little bit more.
We do it on message board, okay? Good practice.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, Shane has to do that because I know we're quite grasping the message board.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you for all the work that you're doing.
I'm excited.
Yeah, I'm super excited.
This is exciting, yeah.
I mean.
I mean, we got it.
We're going to have a public park in downtown Kingsbury.
Could I have another?
It'll be pretty cool.
Michelle just said the seventeenth of December, question mark?
Oh, oh, yes, where did I think, where did the calendar go? Is that where we decided? Let me look. Yeah, did we, I think I put, we might have, yeah, that was a Wednesday. I think we were kind of thinking about that one, third Wednesday, but you're thinking Tuesday.
Why is, why is Wednesday, why is Wednesday good?
I mainly, I think some of the artists said Wednesday was good, but also because it's not Tuesday, because we were doing the house meeting on Tuesday, so, but I don't know.
Is this them coming here or is this like a Zoom?
We need to do the Kingsbury House and then probably a lot of our artists are going to have to Zoom in, so we'd have a Zoom meeting to plan it.
As a start meeting.
You need actual.
So you're talking about City Hall?
When you're planning or, yeah.
I hope we're able to run a Zoom, okay, since there's not internet over there yet. I mean, we could do it on a phone, but.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we could do a hotspot with the phone to a laptop.
If we're there at City Hall, we could grab three minutes to down and have good connection? No?
Well, but if somebody's trying to attend the whole meeting, then.
Go back and forth.
Need the Zoom.
Well, I'm separating their meeting up from ours.
Oh, I, I got you.
Now, because.
Like if it was on the same.
Wednesday's has a special, you know, importance to them, then Wednesday's the day of the week, but.
We'll, we'll all get online and then figure out. So you're, you guys are going to Tuesday.
Whatever, that's real good for all of your people, too.
Okay. And yeah, you did bring up a good point about the Wi-Fi. When are we getting Wi-Fi over there? I guess probably not.
By December, December, the middle of December.
Florida's on.
Good start date for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I'd love to just get one meeting in before the year ends so that we can all get on the same page and we can see who's going to sign up from the community. Misty and Leandra and I were talking about doing two workshops to, to build the, the water fountain part and we'll, we'll have, and that'll be maybe in the beginning of twenty twenty-six and at the end. So those will be ceramic workshops. We'll have people making objects and we'll also have people making tile. And then we're going to do another workshop with Texas Cobb. It'll probably be, Simon kind of feels like you get a momentum going, so he, he wants to do a three-day workshop that would just be three consecutive days and just try to get as much done as we can, so.
Is there already a, a plan?
Well, that's what we're going to, that's what we're doing. We're planning it, we're designing it.
Okay, a design, that's what I mean by plan, I mean design.
Yeah, not quite.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's up to Kingsbury what they want to make. So get your creative juices flowing.
All right, have we, did we make a decision on, on the time or date or anything yet or are we going to kind of work on that?
I think if we're planning on December, maybe we can get, figure it out over the message board. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure, yeah.
December seventeenth is the number.
Sixteenth or seventeenth.
I'll allow it.
Because I think seventeenth worked for some of our people, but yeah, I'll get.
We'd like to have as many people there as possible.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm assuming we're a little flexible. Well, like, what, time of day, early, afternoon, evening?
Oh, in the evening, I think, yeah, we have, I mean.
That ought to be.
Everybody works during the day, so.
Yeah. All right, awesome. Onto item number seven, discuss and consider a new City Hall renovation update and planning. So we've been working, working, working. We have done a lot of the sanding. I don't, you know, I guess there's things that you want to do to the rest of the floor, so I don't know if we have to wait on.
I just want to sand it.
Well, it's open, so you're welcome.
We're finally free from that job.
No, no, but we're not free from everything. We're, we're really, literally won't have extra time till December, but that's okay.
I don't know that we have to wait on wall painting or anything until then, but we got a lot of color samples.
I don't, I don't think there's, personally, I don't think there's, or I'm not painting it, so we have people that want to paint.
I like painting.
You know.
Oh, I love painting, I got a degree in it.
Man and Pam.
Yes.
They, they're good at painting too, I mean.
Yeah.
They're good at it.
Their business.
I don't know, obviously, probably the painting now, and if it gets dry, the sanding we do will not stick to it and it'll blow off.
I think, yeah, I, that, I think that was like the concern about painting before sanding because of it sticking, but if it's dry.
But it doesn't matter.
It's dry.
If it's dry.
I think it's ideal to like do it all in that kind of order, but it's not imperative.
I think, right?
I think if we. We have to wait until you do all of the putting and sanding that you're going to do.
I'm doing all this putting and sanding now?
If we have people knowledgeable.
Well, you're the one that wants it done, so.
Just because I know how it's done right, well, I just want it done right.
If we have knowledgeable painters, I'd like, if they want to do it.
We'll, we'll wait for you to, to complete that.
Get them on the job.
Just want to learn how this is done, no?
The floors can wait.
Yeah, they could, I mean, yeah, if we want to paint it and paint.
Yeah, I think so too.
Now, just realize we're going to sand afterwards, but that's, I never had a problem with that, that was.
So.
I mean, that's, that's what I think.
I, yeah, I think so too.
Those two ladies want to paint.
I would love to go to town on the standing.
Well, we're just.
I would love to go to town on the standing.
So.
Who's potential dusty roses.
Are those all dusty roses?
I mean, there's one actually named Dusty Rose.
Which one?
That one's called Dusty Rose. I have a piece I've been in the car.
Uh, that one?
Yeah.
Or th- that one?
Do, I'm, I'm.
Are you wanting it to be the same as it is now?
I've gotten used to that color.
Realize it's faded.
I've gotten used, I know, but I've gotten used to.
Well, you realize it's not the color it was when they painted it.
The pink that is, is now is, if that was clean, would it look like Pepto Bismol, you know?
Yeah.
No, I don't think it's that deep.
We don't want that one.
I don't think it's that deep of a pink.
There's no.
Why it looks less extreme is because it's old and dirty.
Yeah. It may look a little bit more pink.
So paint it and then scuff it up a little?
You get painted, and you look at it, and you go, you don't like that color? Cause we've done this several times on several walls at our house.
Yeah.
We'll paint the whole damn thing, and we go.
We did that at our house.
I don't like that, do you? I said, no. Or paint, there we go, do it again, so.
So, I mean, I think if we can pick a couple of these and get samples to.
Yeah, and then we'll get, we just didn't wanna get samples of everything, so if you.
That's, that's the one I like.
What type one?
I don't know.
You like the light one?
Ballet rose.
Ooh!
Yeah, I like the lighter, I like the lighter, lighter looks more open.
Yeah, you're right, that's gonna look good on a wall, I'm kinda, I agree.
Not only.
That kind of grayish pink, yeah.
Yeah, the granite was grayish.
But that's gonna be too yellow, that's terrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
I'm, I'm totally good with that.
Yeah, I think it's good.
So, uh, and then, and then these.
I know, a floor isn't light sort of tail.
I know, and we were holding up pictures of, you know, but on your phone, it's a different, of course, it's a different color than what it really is.
So it's the, just so you know, it's a, I just put it up and I squinted.
Sort of darkness.
Yeah, it's the same value as, as this paint that the fire department has.
Your term value, then.
So if it was, if you took a black and white photo of this against that wall, you wouldn't see it. So in other words, on the grayscale, it's the same grayness as this color.
Well, I don't see in grayscale, so it doesn't matter.
Then you don't have to worry about it, I'm not, then I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to the people who understand color.
I know, yeah.
So I'm just saying, like, when you.
Yeah, and we were trying to go for something like, if a whole wall is this color, color like Jessica said, it wouldn't be.
You know?
In other words, it's not a dark color.
Pepto Bismol looking.
It's, it's a light color, but you see.
That's the one I like.
I like it.
Y'all wanna vocal something else?
Yeah, I agree.
Dump the little wood strips.
This was one of my favorites. It was, it was one of my favorites, absolutely. Yeah.
No two tones.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
And then we, and then in the entryway, uh, we were thinking where the, the, what do you call it, wainscoting?
Wainscoting.
Wainscoting, maybe kind of have a two-tone there, and so, we like the color that's in there, so we were kinda going with this.
This with maybe like a.
And then maybe, uh, on the wainscoting, a little bit different.
I think, I think it should be more contrast.
I think so.
More contrast, okay.
They're too similar.
It's too.
I like that light yellow, though, that's nice.
Uh, I don't like that at all.
Okay.
Agreed.
That makes it look like flesh.
Alright, we will, we'll, we'll keep looking, um.
Sounds a little darker on the bottom.
I mean.
Do you want it to be a, a, of the same color fish, or a different color entirely on the bottom?
Be different.
But you know what? If it was, if it's my job to make the decision, I would talk to, what's the lady, the two ladies?
Nan and Pam.
Nan and Pam. Nan, I think, was the one that was throwing out colors and contrasts on that very entryway, and what she said resonated with me.
Yeah.
And so, I don't remember the color she mentioned, I just know that what she said, I kinda liked, so I would ask her again.
She said from light for the top, darker for the.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is kind of what we were, kinda going there.
But I mean, it's dark enough where it's like, you know, if you kicked it with your shoe a little bit, or you leaned against it, it would, it would show up.
The bottom yellow is just not quite contrasty enough.
Not quite, okay.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll, we'll kind of work on that a little bit, kinda hone, hone those colors in, um.
No, throw the pink, the pink's just for that one room.
For the clerk's office, uh. And this would kind of.
Ooh.
Maybe you could.
No, that, that's for clerk's office.
No, I know, but maybe you could tie it into the same room, into that room.
For the accent wall that we were gonna have.
She wanted to do, probably your thing.
It's kinda your decision rather than anyone else's.
I think she was gonna do a small part in Polly's, cause I said I needed.
It's on the wood.
It's on the wood. So just bring out the wood.
Is that how dark the ceiling is?
And then the accent wall would be.
I don't know, we were looking at, um.
It's not that dark.
I, we were.
Dark, though.
Yeah, it's not, it's not that dark.
We were holding up a picture of.
That's darker than you think.
Depends on how much.
The cards to the picture of it.
That's darker than that chair.
Well, when it, when, it depends on how much light is falling on it, we were looking, we were holding up pictures of the ceiling.
Right up to the picture.
And that was, that was the ceiling.
I mean, the hues almost, right?
Exactly, exactly.
The paint they mix will not match that exactly.
Exactly.
And after you get it up on the wall, you'll either like it or you won't, and chances are, if it's close, you'll like it.
Yeah, so we were.
Well, I guess the question was, I, I think that, I think that Nan and Pam were suggesting gray is the accent wall, and I have, I'm.
Talking about the entry foyer.
How much darker that is.
The clerk's office, you know?
Well, that's the shadow area.
And I, uh.
It's way lighter, it's like, two or three shades lighter than.
I would have to be talked into gray, and not a bakery.
Yeah. Like, what I'm saying is the hue, the hue is pretty close.
But the question was, is the green next to that?
You know what I mean by that, like, the color is almost the right color.
Look weird.
You gotta add white to it two more, three more times.
So, I don't know, I.
I like the color.
And that's why we were carrying around this blue card, was to kind of, you know, we were trying to match, we, we were looking at a picture of, of that room on our phones, and holding up different blue cards, trying to figure out what was the closest match, and that was the closest we found.
Like, I think the, the.
But, you know, it's hard to tell, cause it's just a picture.
I like the hue, but I think the, the value needs to be like, one lighter, or two.
I would believe that, it seems a little dark.
More.
Dude, it's not his office.
Slightly more blue if you're really going for it, but who cares?
Yeah.
It's pretty close.
So, we just wanted something that we could kind of then compare with some of the others.
That's pretty close, you know, so go up, so.
Historical significance.
Let me teach you an old, just so everyone knows, this is an old trick.
We don't need historical significance, we have historical significance hanging on the wall in places, and. Charlie's collecting, and, and we have history, and the exterior has its, its age, you know?
Yeah.
But we're not restoring this, we're.
Yeah.
We are making it habitable and usable.
Hey, wait, but you're making it habitable, that's hard, that's hard to.
So these are. Just ask a good question.
Yeah, those are beautiful.
This is the wallpaper from behind the pink wall.
And thus far, at a volunteer, non-made.
I'm sorry?
Workhorse.
Yeah, I know.
Well.
Yeah.
What's important?
Well, yeah, so I would say, yeah, I, and I have all the wallpaper, this is, like I said, some of the wallpaper from behind the pink, and it was just as crispy and.
Brand new.
Crumbly as the rest of it. It was, oh my gosh, it's, as Frank and I first encountered in that first room, about Frank, Sam and I encountered in that first room, how you can't even get it off in any sizable pieces, because it, it just crumbles by looking at it, yeah. Um, so, uh, I was there, I was like, okay, get as big a piece as you can, and let it float into my arms, so I can catch it, you know, and it's still just under its own weight, it just tears under its own weight, so, yeah. It was, so, but this is.
All by itself.
Yes, it was just floating. So, uh, yeah, I've done this, here's some of the, so this is behind, this is what's behind the pink. Um, it's kind of a flowery.
Those are really fun, yeah.
Yeah, and then this is one of the pieces of tile, and these are the smaller, I did a big one and small ones of what I could, um, so. That, I think they will look really, really nice, they've turned out really, Lottie keeps saying, they look like works of art.
They are works of art, they're fantastic.
Yeah.
Entryway, he's a very neutral color.
We were literally thinking about putting you in this art show, Mayor, but your, your, your dance cards have pulled up.
Yeah.
By the way, go ahead.
The other appointment that is taking place, uh, she's not telling us about her other work, uh, windows.
Oh, uh, yes.
She's going down the list.
Uh, yeah, I'm going down the list. Yes, so I've gone through, a lot of the windows, uh, no longer have any kind of glazing on them, so going through and glazing, and having to use a razor scraper and get off the, they're yellowed, uh, razor scraper, and. So some of them I could just pull out, and then I could put on the table and, and really get that coloring off of it. Um, and getting, you know, windows rehung, and, uh, and, uh, gonna work on the screens a little bit, so working through windows, it's, it's a lot slower than what I intended it to be, but, you know, it's, I, 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 uh, don't want the clerk's room to, to be these, uh. Yeah, so this is what, how they started, you know, it's.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it was, it was, you know, just, uh, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of age on there, a lot of overpaint and overcaulk from years, many years ago, um, and so, you know, and now they're, you know, now they're.
And rolling.
Now, now they're rolling, and, and, uh, yeah, so this one, yeah, this one was actually like the first one. And what's fun about this one is, this is facing the street, you know, it's the one on the right from the inside.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when you walk in, you can tell it's the old glass, cause it kind of shimmers.
Yeah, you have the.
Yeah, it has the waves in it.
Flow, the real flow.
Yeah, yeah, it kind of, kind of shimmers when you, oh yeah, you can even see.
Yeah.
You can see the little, the little.
Oh, yeah, waviness in the glass.
Waviness in the glass, so, uh, working on the windows. Um, I also bought the parts needed to rewire the light, uh, in the, uh, big room, in the meeting room, and, uh, I was able, I was able to, uh, get the lamps, so now I can have a lamp shade that's actually on the ceiling fan and running, uh, so, got that going, um.
So I never had one.
I'm sorry?
Well, I had that big CFL, that squirrel.
No, it never had a globe.
It probably never did have a globe, because the way it was.
It does now.
It does now.
That's what I.
And, yeah, and it's called a, a schoolhouse design.
Schoolhouse rock?
Yeah, schoolhouse, that, that shape of globe is called a schoolhouse.
Oh, right, right, right.
And, uh, so it really kind of fits, fits the room. Um, I'm talking with a, uh, a handyman, a handyman guy, Larry, Larry the handyman, uh, that, uh, about the chimney swing, get that, those walls out of there, uh, where the, where the bathroom was. So we'll get that going, and just continuing to, to move through the house, but now we can, actually, if we can come on to some colors, we can, we can paint, and.
Make a big difference.
And make a big difference.
Can I show you guys something real quick? This is a really fun thing, I'm not gonna turn this into an art class, but it'll be really quick. So when you wanna match a color, this is called an artist window. All this is, is a piece of paper that you fold in half and cut a very tiny little, little half moon out of, and you open it up, and then you've got a white piece of paper. So what you can do with this is you can find, it helps you with the value, now value is where a color is on the grayscale from white to black. Every color has a value, no matter what color it is. So it's interesting when you put, like, Shirley, look at this, look at how close this value is to this table. The color is so, the hue is so bright, you would think this is nowhere near this table, but what you do is you put it halfway in the middle of each color.
Mm-hmm.
And then you squint. Now, you got a little white marked out, it's not fair, okay, let's move it up. You squint, and that, if that line disappears, that value is almost the same.
Oh.
Now, you can match a color that way, too, so if you took this up to the ceiling, and then put your artist window, and you put half this on one side, and you put the, whatever color on the other side, and you just barely squint, if you barely squint, it's gonna give you the grayscale, so you'll know that the value is the same, and if the, the, the color should disappear on its own without squinting. So if it's not right, you'll see if it's too cool or warm, and of course, cool means towards the blue side of colors, and too warm means towards.
I've learned that with lights these days.
The red. Anyway, artist window, it's very helpful, cut a little, fold a piece of paper in half, cut a little tiny hole, tiny, tiny hole, and you put that color right in the middle, and that's how we can check that, but that's how you can see, like, it looks like this is so loud compared to that, the value is almost the same.
Now, one thing that, uh, that, uh, Nan and Pam, uh, asked about was caulking on the sides of the, uh, those stays.
Okay.
Those.
Those stays.
The little board strips that cover the seams.
The petition boards, and they said, oh, well, no, so there's just not a gap in the paint.
Oh, yeah.
Wouldn't paint it, and I said, yeah, I think, I think, they said they can, like, just knock that out really quickly. So we're not talking anything change the form, it's just so there's not a.
Seal that crack.
Because those boards, the panels are not flat.
Yeah.
So some of them have some pretty big gaps underneath those stays.
It's gonna show up when you paint.
Right, it'll, it'll be a black gap there.
It has to be caulked.
That's absolutely great.
Has to be treated.
Did you guys choose it white for the meeting room yet, or did you look at whites?
No, we haven't, we're, we were overwhelmed just getting what we did here, so, yeah.
Hopefully, right now, there's like tons of different kinds of white.
Oh, yeah, 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 um, so, uh, so, yeah, I did say yes, and they were gonna do it poly on, like I said, on that one part, so we can kind of get an idea of, of that. Yes, and I think they were gonna try and do that today, and I haven't stopped by there today, so.
It's alright.
Alright, so, yes, so, uh. We'll need to, we, we can see about getting some samples, the ballet, ballet rose.
Right here.
The ballet, and then.
Frittata.
Frittata, and then something darker with the frittata, and we can like pick up.
Frittatas for the upper wall and the.
In the entryway.
And the entryway, I like that.
Okay.
You like this?
It's a little light, it could be even.
Oh, you think this.
But you know how it is, when you're looking at a card, and you're looking at something on the wall.
This is lighter than this wall, like squint. This is brighter than that.
I like light nary.
Put that behind the corner.
Look at how this disappears.
What I do, what I do is I pick out a color and then I go the next shade lighter. Because once you put it on the wall, I learned that with our house.
Look how much darker, look how much darker, look how much lighter that is than this.
I think it'll be nice to have lighter.
That line does not disappear.
Yeah, I mean, I was almost like, is this too dark?
Yeah.
Well, this might be too dark, but it works your choir fighter.
That's what I say. I pick out, I pick out a color and then I go, we learned that. We go to the next, and every now, every time we've not gone with that, we're like, darn it. So always pick the color I like and then on this, on the little thing.
Frittata.
Okay.
Just be aware, this is brighter than you think because look at how dark that is.
And Nan and Pam said what they do is they.
I don't trust my eyes, but that has a li- a light green tint to it.
Oh.
It does.
No, it's in the gold.
No.
Yeah, but it has, he's right. It's, it's a little slightly cool.
Oh.
It is slightly cool. It's not as yellow as, um, you don't have anything.
It's a very slight hint of green.
No, it's true.
Like this is.
Like that's more towards, like that's, that's warmer than that. Now you can see.
That's darker.
Now you can see the coolness in that when you hold it next to that.
Um, and then what, and then what.
That's more orange, that's more blue.
Nan and Pam were saying too, is also you can like take, get, pick your color and then like fifty-fifty and they'll edit, it will lighten it. So that's, that's the kind of thing to do.
Yeah.
If you, if you got home with it and realized it wasn't what you wanted, then yes.
Well, I, I've, like I said, just me picking colors.
But this, this'll really help you.
I'm not, what's on the little card, once you put a wall of that color, then it's a different color.
Yeah.
No, yeah. Well, i- i- it's light interaction is how light.
And you look at it and go, that's the color I chose, not lighting.
Yeah.
You tell yourself.
Yeah, you gotta realize like this color looks, like we're looking at this color right now at sundown, under this light.
Under fluorescent lights.
You see the sunrise, you're gonna be like, what's this orange on the wall? I've never noticed it was so orange. Like, you're gonna see colors you haven't seen in, in sunrise versus dusk.
At some point, we're just gonna like pick a color.
It's how light inter- it's how light interacts with the color too.
Okay. Uh, so that's where we are, so I think we can start caulking. We'll check out Polly. I'm, we're leaving it up to Jessica, Jessica to kind of pick her accent color. In her room. Uh, we can, apparently we can paint before the whole flooring is done and we can just start moving through and sun picking and.
That board that they painted, fill in the gap where you took the panel down in the pink room.
It was like.
Correct? That temper board or whatever?
They, they found a piece, yeah.
Yes.
Did they buy that or do they have scrap land?
They, they purchased that, cause they were looking for something that was exactly the same width as what was there.
Yeah, MDF.
And I told them that we will, that we will reimburse them for that. Me, I've just donated everything so far.
No, because I was saying, do they have any scrap left over?
They, I'm sure they do.
If it's laying there. I wanted to see because the trim on the inside of the door to the clerk's office.
No.
Did you trim off?
Yes.
Alright, well, didn't have to, found out because Tyler just cut around everything.
We ended up cutting around it.
Which is great.
Yeah.
But now, this is gonna go back on without anything underneath it and it needs something underneath it to bring that space out.
Well, you know, I, I pried out the, to, in order to get that one window working, the weights had fallen down in the walls. I pried out those, uh, the trim.
Yeah.
And to, to get the weights and rehang.
And it didn't hurt it.
And, no, when I put it back, it went back, it, cause I kept saying, I, I'm like, well, they must've had some kind of cardboard back here in order to do some weather proofing. And then it was, uh, Jessica finally said, no, I think that's the, but, and sure enough, it was, it was blue. So, but once I put it back, it looked fine.
I'll look at it again, but I noticed when I, when I was looking at that trim, that one of the hinges, the screw and the hinge goes into that trim. And I said, so now I've just moved it a quarter inch or so the wrong direction. So the door's not gonna fit correctly in the holes that are there.
Oh, well.
So I don't know if I can drill new holes because this got the, I forget the, what you call the, the trim around the inside of the frame where the door shuts against.
Jam?
Yeah, well, the.
Jam, the, um.
But you know what I'm talking about.
Moleen, I don't know.
Yeah, too many names, too many.
Yeah.
So, okay, I said there's some scrap, I was gonna look at it.
Yeah, so these are at least the rooms to definitely start with because they require the least amount of actual.
Repair?
Repair, yes. The least amount of repair. So these are, these are good rooms to start with.
I honestly never thought it was the end of the world to work back and forth anyway. I mean, like, yeah, sure, you don't wanna paint the walls until the floors are done. Ideally, but like if the floors aren't perfect and you gotta go back and do them, you gotta go back and do them. I mean, whatever. It's, it's not gonna destroy the paint, you just.
If we're gonna lay a new floor.
Yeah, make sure the paint's dry.
We just put in a new floor, then we go in and clean the walls.
Yeah.
But at this rate, it seems like the paint all have been up for at least a couple of weeks.
Dusty, yeah, yeah.
Um, alright, Tyler asks any more progress on the structural corners, which reminds me that Sam, did you have that meeting with Ruelis?
I haven't, I've been able to meet with him yet, but I did, I've been, uh, talking to him and trying to pin him down. And he told me today that he would, uh, he has a job in, off, in, on Appling Road tomorrow. And he's going to call me when he finishes up over there and we're gonna meet and go over there and look at it. So I was gonna get an idea from him and I'll report back to you on what he says about doing those, uh, corner posts and, uh, uh, and then also the piers underneath where we're going to, where the chimney is, uh, to, and so, uh, it, that's, I, I didn't know, I was gonna ask him if he would take it from the, uh, the piers and then build a superstructure or the structure to hold that up. But if you have a handyman that's gonna be doing that, surely, uh, I, maybe I'll just get from him to where he's gonna put the piers. Well, we'll need to know where the piers are and how you wanna do that structure. But anyway, I'll get an idea from him as to what he thinks should be done and then the cost of doing it and whether he'll do it. And I think it's all four corners of, of the building, uh, have that, uh, uh, weather eaten wood.
There's more than four.
There's more than four corners. Yeah.
Oh, more than four corners, okay.
Cause the house isn't square, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh.
Thank you.
Do you want me to, well, you probably. Anyway, I'll meet with him and I'll try to get that.
But it is every corner.
Idea from him, so you can approve that or whatever you wanna do going forward.
So, wait, what's this about a handyman or are we asking him if he can take care of all of this or just part of?
Take a look at it, yeah, maybe, maybe he can.
Give us a quote.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, if you can't do the underneath, so Shane and I can take down those walls, no problem. I mean, that's not the problem, it's underneath.
Taking down the walls is not a problem, but having framing in place to hold it up before you take the walls down.
Yeah. So I got someone that's gonna take a look at that.
Alright, there we go.
Yeah. And then I can have him take a look at that also.
Just gotta go all the way to the ground.
At the, yeah.
But we still should have homeboy come look at it, right?
Yeah, yeah, Gabriel actually comes with that.
Well, you could go all the way to the ground, but you don't wanna just take.
No, 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 it has, yeah, no.
We need some kind of piers down there to.
You need a pylon or.
Something.
Yeah, a pylon or whatever.
A base or something.
Is that, do you think, are there gonna be two, is it just gonna be two, uh, four by fours going up to support it coming through the floor?
That should do it.
That floor is rotted right there, so.
That'd make me feel uneasy.
That's why it has, that's why you go to the ground.
Yeah.
Cause the floor can't hold it.
Yeah, especially cause of what I saw, it just, it needs more. But if it goes all the way to the ground, two piers to do the whole thing, cause it is, it is resting in the wall. It has got a pitch and a grab on the wall, like, after all, the weight's being distributed right now is literally in the wall.
Is this the beam, the floor beam under that?
Under, under.
Or close to it?
Yes, the floor beam, or the wall beam.
The wall.
The wall beam, and there is a wall beam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's supported on that side.
Okay.
That's why I'm not as alarmed as I, you know, could be. But that, that front end needs to be dealt with or it's gonna.
It was built into the wall, so it's, there's a beam for, basically.
Not only that, when I was looking at it, there's like this joist beam thing that's in the wall, like a cantilever. Like, it's like, there's like a, there's some serious like structure to that part of it.
Okay, yeah, we're good.
And also, we did get one quote for electrical and then another quote for the electrical, which were very far apart. I've got another person, uh, that, uh, that Katie, Katie suggested. So I've got his information, so, uh, I have to get with him on electrical.
Could I ask a favor of you?
Yes, sir.
Could you, whenever it's done, uh, before we make a decision, give me like a diagram or a written plan of what's actually gonna be done, replaced.
Yes, and I have one.
And subtracting where it's gonna be and.
I have one.
Excuse me, yeah. Yeah, one guy like.
Yeah, I forgot about the electrical part.
Let him look at it and see what he says.
Okay.
Tyler said not just the corners, but I don't really know what he means by that. Is it a structural corner?
Did he say, did he say structural?
He said structural corners before.
Was he talking about the, the siding and the wall framing sort of?
No, he's literally.
I know he was working on the corners where it's rotted out, but that was like the siding wood and the trim wood and maybe, uh.
I mean, there was, it wasn't sitting on anything. I mean, is there any way?
I mean, he's talking about, like, so everything's been lifted now, which is great and everything's, but I think what, what he might be talking about is if you look underneath and stuff, where all the beams and the joists come together.
Some of the beams are replaced and like I say, they did not do anything to fill.
The joists.
Yes.
So the beams are new or reinforced, but the joists are getting like, like, so like, say, here's the beam and all the joists come into it. Where they're coming in, they're, they're, they're getting, they're getting thin. Like, they're all kinda rotten a little. I mean, they might be okay. They might be okay. I don't really know, I'm not an engineer. They might be okay, but they are experiencing a little bit of rot.
And specifically the corners.
He says bottom plate and studs going to nothing under them.
Okay, the bottom plate and the studs, there's nothing under them to support it. Okay, he's talking about ground support at the corners.
Right, they put the concrete there, but they didn't fill in.
Did they put?
The concrete pier is wide enough that it's catching on the, but it's not catching the corner, sort of, is what.
I don't know, we might need to take some pictures.
Yeah, I mean, I did look at what he was, and he was saying like, he was gonna fill in this rotten wood with the putty and then saw it off flat and then you would put something, a block under that to, so that there's support going down to the.
Basically getting rid of the rot.
Is it a beam or to the ground? It's to the beam.
Beam.
It's a beam.
Okay, okay.
To the concrete pier.
It's a pier, yeah.
To the concrete pier.
There should be a beam on top of every pier.
I think the corners need specifically put that stuff on, it's just kinda floating.
Yeah.
The pier's down here and the, the whole house is floating.
So.
Here's what I don't.
Planting City Hall.
There's a pier at the corner, like this, uh, the outside corner. The pier, uh, the pier is right there at the corner and there's a beam comes up to it both ways at the corner. But above the beam is.
The corner.
The.
Corner of the house.
Corner of the house and, and if, there's a gap.
There's nothing underneath, okay.
And Tyler has already epoxied the rotten wood or someone did.
Tyler did, I was working on it.
At least in that one corner.
Epoxied that so that that wouldn't decay any further.
Further, yeah.
But I think what would you do, just cut it off to where it's not, uh, so that it's square, goes back to the square board and then you just have a support.
We just need to put a block in.
Little footer or something, a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's.
Yeah, that's how I understand it.
Unless there's something else that.
Are we getting it right, Tyler?
We need to do.
I hope so, cause I do worry about, I do really worry about this part of it because we're all trying to do all this cosmetic and get it done. I'm like, wait, 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 make sure we got all the flooring stuff done, cause if we don't, it's pointless to do everything else.
Well, and you, you brought up, someone just mentioned, uh.
I don't know who that is.
Engineering, whether, uh, whether it's, whether it's engineered and whether the plates there. Uh, I was thinking in regard to the chimney, the more I think about it and I look at it, I wonder if, uh, if, if any of us or even Gabriel and Tyler, if we can, uh, design that or do we need an engineer? So I just raised the question, do we have to have an engineer give us a plan to support that chimney? Cause I think that chimney probably weighs three hundred.
We, we figured about six hundred, seven hundred.
Yeah.
But here's the thing, I think we figured out a way to lock it in place where it really can't go anywhere. I, I'm not worried about engineer on that, but what I am, what I am interested in is what, who is the person that should look at it next, the whole building, to say, yeah, go ahead and do all that or whoa, 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 you need to support all this stuff? And is that an engineer or is that a flooring person? I don't really know who it is. Here, here's my question to everyone. I wanna know that we're okay, we're above board to go ahead and continue to do everything else, like that the flooring is not, like, it's great that we re-levelled the house, but what if? You know, that's my question is, like, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so I don't know, so maybe it's fine.
Part of what, the, all those, he's got a hundred piers under there.
Right, right. Yeah, but they don't always connect to things. Have you noticed? If you look.
They do.
Okay. Well, there's some places where they don't touch things.
You're right, Shane, a couple of places they don't. Is that for future or is that because?
Right.
Oh, on the edge, on that outside corner.
Is that because it has not settled yet because everything has to.
Yeah, ninety-eight of them touch things. So it's, it's a solid.
The back porch needs to be shimmed.
Yeah.
But you just meet, make the floor meet the pier.
Yeah.
Feel it, sure.
Like, I know that you get a, a flooring guy, like a leveling guy to do that, like, who's the guy? Like, I wanna make sure that we're, if, if we're good and engineer or whatever, we don't, I don't need an engineer. If, if we're good, then we're good. I, I don't know that personally with my expertise and lack of thereof. And, you know, I built everything from scratch out of my place, but it's from scratch. I've never had to deal with older buildings. So in other words, my concern is only that we've done the foundation, that's great. Is everything supported and secure? And if it is, then let's move on. But who tells us whether it is or not? That's where, I don't know the answer to that. That's.
If the back porch, the back porch is most, the most missing.
Most missing, it is.
Okay.
And the corners in general.
We could break it all out and put in a new back porch.
Yes. Like, there's literally places where the corner comes together and the, the, every, all the founda- all this stuff's great.
Right.
But where the house meets it.
There's a space.
Yeah.
Fill that space.
I'm like, wait a minute.
Fill that space and we're good. We're good.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're.
But I'm like, who do you get to tell you?
We don't.
That's either, that's a home builder, uh, like a, a builder, a general contractor builder, or it's an engineer.
Okay, it's gotta be, right?
I mean, Tyler said home inspector question mark.
No.
No, we already.
No.
I mean, we did already get an inspection of that building, right?
Yeah, but that was.
They just got problems and no answers.
Home inspectors are not.
Well.
Structural inspector perhaps.
I'm not concerned.
For the weight that you.
I could show you some areas where you might be more concerned.
No, no.
As looking at it.
I know that if there's nothing there, I said, in the next fifteen years, it might begin to droop, alright?
Well.
I have a beam in my house that my son, who's an engineer, told me that beam is too small, the span is too great. And I said, well, my calculation said it's fine. He said, well, you're gonna, and so I measured it in the center from the beam to the floor. And I said, when I had the roof and everything put on, it did come down a quarter of an inch and it hasn't moved since. And I check it every year, just to make sure my son.
Well, good for you. Ah, that's a good reason to check. But I'm just saying, we definitely need to look at the corners though.
No, no. I need it for something.
And throughout the years, we find out the ground moves and yes, we have to do re-leveling.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing about Ruela is doing it, you have the piers that will support you, then balance on them.
I don't, yeah.
And I'm sorry that I speak out so loudly, but.
No.
It's okay.
No, I, I, no.
Okay, so we do need to have those corners and, and there's a few places that we do need to, to look at.
Maybe it is a, a, like a contractor, a general contractor that just looks at it and goes, oh yeah, you guys are good to go ahead. I, that's, that's where I'm at. It might be, I just don't know that.
I value Ruela's opinion, highly.
Maybe that'd be good. Then let's do that.
Hey, he did the flat foundation out on Hill G Road before he did Kingsbury House. Do you know that that woman has been here forty years anyway?
Yeah.
Uh, it's amazing the people, and I actually talked to the crew, Ruela, and all the different houses in the city, you can go look at them.
I know.
Anyway, but.
I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, we're not just like, oh, doing all the cosmetic, it's all great, and then five years we're like, err. We're like, oh, the foundation's still there, but the building is like this, eh, anyway.
Yeah.
I, I value, uh, Gabriel's input also, cause he did a good job and stuff. But I'm not, uh, he, he's not like an engineer that would, because he's very good at scoping it out and saying, here's, here's how you do it. Here's what you build. But he's not, he is not the same as an engineer or a home builder that would say, I'm gonna put that in writing. I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna give you a report that says exactly what needs to be done to each corner and each beam in order to make this thing secure.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're looking for, because if you get it from Gabriel and he knows what he's doing, but it's interpreted by me and I feed it back to you, there's still gonna be stuff that Tyler and you are gonna say, well, wait, wait a minute, we're missing some parts. Uh, I just wanna make sure that, uh, it's not, not an interpretation by me, cause I'm not an engineer and I don't know, uh, what, and we just, uh, have to see. So I think we start with just having the meeting and I'll see what Gabriel says and then I try to report that to you and then you decide whether we need to do something different.
That might be all we need to know.
Okay.
Tyler says my biggest concerns were the corners and the roof.
Agreed.
Right.
Right now, in our subreddit account, we have thirteen thousand dollars.
I mean, we're, we're working on that. We're working on that.
Now, some things I've.
Well, potentially, right?
That's not gonna be a, I don't think, but go ahead.
I mean, there's some things that I have attributed to that, like the porta potty every month.
You tighten every once in a while.
I haven't actually taken out.
Alright.
I haven't actually taken out, but in our budget, it's, you know, part of that.
Needs to be addressed.
Just, just for the building? More or less, City Hall?
I think for, in our.
I didn't think we had a budget just specifically for that.
Yeah, well, yeah, we did put a budget item in there, uh, for that, it was about ten thousand.
For what?
Budget item for renovation.
Renovating City Hall, okay.
That's, and, and it's under that TDM, C L R funds usage.
And that's after we had the building leveled, right?
Yes.
Because I was gonna say.
The initial, the initial things were prior to budgeting, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, so I think we have a path forward.
Recap?
On road.
It goes paint, electric, foundation, thank you Tyler.
Alright, item number eight, discuss and consider road maintenance. So this is, uh, the road need, uh, needed maintenance to Rocky Road and Brown Road. And I, uh, our road guy, uh, gave me the name or had another person, uh, contact me and we've contacted each other. He's gonna put together a quote and get it to me, I just texted him a while ago and said, hey. Uh, yeah, so he's getting a, a quote and he is with Five M, Five M Concrete, I believe.
Five M.
Five M, uh, concrete, so, uh, we are, again, I, I apologize for the slow movement on that, but you know, we're, we're trying to get with the right people to do the right thing, cause some of that is kinda precarious where, you know, especially on Rocky where it's over that culvert, you know, so. Whereas Rocky, you go down eleven oh four, you go past your house towards ten.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it's on the.
Right before ten, it's not.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's not access road.
I had to remember.
So.